I'd like to declare the council meeting open. I'd like to remind everybody that in accordance with the council's code of meeting practice, this meeting is being livestreamed. Also, if you're not participating in any debate, please could you mute your phone? So we phone mute your computers so we don't hear the rustlings of mysterious things. Thank you. The prayer of council will be read by the Chief Executive Officer, Dr Eddie Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening councillors. Before we begin proceedings, we'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present, the Cabragal clan of the Darag nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by people of the Darawal and Darag nations. The affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. And the prayer of council. For the God of our faith, we who are gathered at Liverpool City Council pray for the good government of our city. We pray for the wellbeing of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race, gender or creed. Tonight, we pray for sound decision making by council, which can improve the quality of life in our city. We pray for Australia, our nation's future, for the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Amen.
Thank you. Do we have any apologies? Neil, thank you. Condolences? Neil, previous minutes.
May it be taken away, Madam Mayor.
Seconded, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Sheldon. Thank you councillor Didd. Uh declarations of interest?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one. Uh Conf 06, non pecuniary and non-significant, but I will leave the virtual room. I want to participate in discussion.
Any others?
The owner of of the property is a friend of mine.
Oh four, did you say? Sorry?
Yes.
Okay. Any others?
Um, Madam Mayor, I'd like to declare a um non-significant, non-pecuniary interest in Com 01. Mm-hmm. Uh I know uh several of the organisations that are listed in the recommendations through uh my work in the community.
Uh likewise, Com 01 and same, less than significant, non-pecuniary, I'll leave the room, same reason.
Okay, thank you. Any others?
Yes, Mayor, Conf 01, non-pecuniary, less than significant. Um I live in the area, uh this has no effect on me, but I'll be staying in the room.
Okay, thank you. Any others? That's it? Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I'll do an interest in Com 01.
Yep.
Non-pecuniary, uh I don't think there's any reason to leave the room.
Okay, so non-significant, thank you. All right, thank you councillors. Any others? All right, thank you. Public submissions, I don't have any on file. The next item is a merrill minute called titled Environmental Planning and Assessment Amendment. On Friday the 16th of July 2021, uh council was notified by the Chief Executive of LG New South Wales of the passage by the New South Wales State Government of the Environmental Planning and Assessment Amendment Compliance Fees Regulation 2021 New South Wales. Liverpool City Council is one of the 29 councils in New South Wales which charges compliance levies to support council development and compliance activities. Earlier this year, while council was finalising its 21 to 22 budget, the government announced it intended to prohibit the ability of councils to charge a compliance levy from the 1st of July 2021. Following strong advocacy from LG New South Wales, the councils, the government announced it would defend defer this imposition on councils so it could consult with the sector and introduce a new compliance funding regime. Regrettably, in the absence of any consultation and despite ongoing advocacy by the LG in New South Wales, the Environmental Planning and Assessment Amendment Compliance Fees Regulation 2021 was published on Friday the 16th of July 2021, with the effect of prohibiting councils from collecting compliance levies. From those councils that currently collect compliance levies, this prohibited law now takes effect from the 31st of December 2021. This regulation was made in the same month that government saw the passage of the new legislation, which facilitates compliance levies for the New South Wales Building Commissioners Office. Councillors will be required to collect the new compliance levy for the Building Commissioners Office and remit the funds and won't be able to collect compliance levies to fund their own development and compliance activities. LG New South Wales considers this as an outrageous impost on councils. LG New South Wales will be strongly responding to the government's action and has requested our council's assistance by providing information about the financial impact of this change. For Liverpool City Council, the compliance levy has raised an average of $3 million per year since the levy was introduced in 2015, 2016 financial year. This council has previously resolved all revenue from the levy be used to fund council development and compliance activities. Removing the ability for councils to collect a compliance levy will result in at least a $3 million $3 million shortfall in council's operational budget and in future years potentially more, depending on the level of development activity within the LGA and will significantly affect our capacity to deliver the level of compliance activities expected by the community. For a high-growth council like Liverpool, the compliance levy is an opportunity to ensure adequate oversight and resourcing of our regulatory responsibilities. Coming on top of changes to the contributions planning framework, the removal of the compliance levy is yet another cut to local government funding without any reduction in demand. The state government should reverse this decision or or implement at least a two-year monitorium on the removal of a levy in high-growth councils like Liverpool to enable this transition to take place to a new scheme. This would enable a transition to alternative budget arrangements for future financial years without impacting so significantly on service delivery over a short term. The recommendation is that council write to Rod, the Honourable Rod Stokes, Minister for Planning and Public Spaces, requesting the government reverse the decision to prohibit council from collecting compliance levies from the 31st of December 2021 or in the alternative for the state government to implement at least a two-year monitorium on the removal of the levy of for high-growth councils such as Liverpool to enable that transition to any new scheme. I formally move that. Um any objections?
No, Madam Mayor, can I declare a pecuniary interest and I'm leaving for this one?
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, I wasn't aware this was coming up, so I couldn't do that.
Okay. Uh no objections and councillor Tiddy has declared an interest, has left the virtual room. I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it carried.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to be recorded as voting against, please.
Okay then, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next merrill minute is a merrill minute relating to COVID. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Liverpudlians for staying home and doing the right thing. We are living through a very unusual and challenging times. While virus cases across Greater Sydney are concerning, Liverpool's numbers remain lower compared to other local government areas named. While due to the pandemic, the local government elections have been postponed until the 4th of December 2021. And like anybody in our community, I'm in lockdown with my immediate family members, including children, and this can relate to many challenges, as I think we all can relate to, such as homeschooling and also continuing to work. It's not easy and we're all doing it and we're all doing it tough. We are a resilient community and when faced with adversity, we stand together. If you're at home and experience distress, please reach out via phone or use technology to reach out to someone you trust. Support is available through Beyond Blue, Helpline, Lifeline, the National Sexual Assault Domestic Family Violence Counseling Service and the National Debt Hotline. In other words, reach out for assistance. This pandemic is very serious because the virus has mutated and this time people of all ages, including children, are affected by it in our community and they're vulnerable and it's extremely contagious. As a parent and a grandparent, automatically you wish to protect those most vulnerable in your family. I would like to stress the health guidelines are provided regarding hair of family members not of your household. Please follow these instructions. The Minister for Health and Medical Research, Brad 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 Hazen, has explained recently that a number of community infections occurred due to families intermingling to pay their respects after a death in the family. This would indeed be a very sad time with plenty of rituals and traditions involved, but it is crucial that you do not visit someone else's household at this time. My own cousin recently passed away and sadly I could not attend the household nor attend the funeral. And we used technology and yes, we were very close too. I have lobbied for more vaccination centres in Liverpool and there has been some success with that. From the 2nd of July, 2nd of August, pop-up mobile vaccination vaccination centres will be set up in nominated suburbs in our community. It's important that you get tested if you run well. Currently, the Whitlam Centre is offering a 24-hour testing service. Getting Australians vaccinated is important now more than ever and we're proud to be doing our bit here in Liverpool to help bolster the vaccine rollout in South West Sydney, which is the only way to safeguard the community against COVID-19. We saw the eradication of polio and tetanus through vaccinations and we hope to see the same result regarding this pandemic. Please consult your GP if you're in need. You really need to think of the safety of each other, don't take risks, don't ignore health directives, stay home, get tested and get vaccinated if you can. The wellbeing of our residents seriously weighs upon my mind heavily and my councillors' minds. This is a pandemic, a national emergency, and it is serious. To get the numbers down, we will need to stick to the necessary and but sometimes restrictive health directives. Please stay home, stay safe, so we all are safe. Thank you very much councillors and I'm just moving that this be noted as a report. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. And before we move on, I know that you've all heard it, but we're all locked down until the end of August. Okay, on that happy note, we'll now move on to the first item, which is on page 61.
Happy to move that, Madam Mayor.
Seconded.
Oh, seconded, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You seconded in several places, they moved by councillor Rhodes and seconded by councillor Sheldon. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page 67.
I'll move that one too, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Sheldon. Thank you councillor Rhodes. Up, any objections? I'll put it, those in agreed, those opposed, carried. On page 83 is the next item.
Madam Mayor, I've got a question on this one.
Yes, certainly.
The um the $77,750 for the intersection upgrade, is that sufficient to address the traffic needs in that area? That's the biggest question that most people are asking about that particular uh development on the corner of Oxton Park Road. So the question is, is there, is that sufficient funds for the work that's going to be done? For the intersection of the upgrade, there's a left-hand turn out of that by going through, I've forgotten the name of the street, just down the back of that development. I can see that, so you can't turn into that property until you're going in a certain direction, but um yeah, just wondering, $77,000 for the intersection upgrade, uh if that is sufficient enough funds for what needs to be done there for the traffic, I'm presuming it is. But that's the question that people are most concerned about, about that development, about the traffic that's going to be generated right on the corner.
Okay, are you on page 76 or page 83?
Um 76.
Ah, well, I had that as the second item that went through, but that's all right, I'll revisit that. Um councillor, I'll ask the CEO for a comment.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, uh Mr Smith, please clarify.
Yes, thank you, thank you, through the CEO, thank you councillor. Uh that $77,000 is actually for public domain improvement works, not for traffic works. Um so that's for improvements to the public domain. Any future improvements uh to the road network will be addressed as part of any future development application and that $77,000 funding uh is through the planning agreement, which council has already approved and the CEO has delegation to execute.
Ah, so it's for the public domain work?
Apparently no, councillor.
That's correct.
Okay, any other I don't know what that was. Any other questions? Okay, can we have a motion please councillor? If there won't be a motion put forward, this will lapse. So is there a motion to be put forward councillors?
I'm happy to move it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Hall.
I'm happy to second.
Thank you very much councillor Hall. Any objection? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the carry, carried. Next items.
You can record me as voting against.
Thank you councillor Sheldon.
Thank you.
No worries. Next items on page 83.
Um, Madam Mayor, on this uh particular item, I think I would prefer to maintain the current situation. So it wouldn't be adopting the recommendation as put, but receive a note this report and then number two, maintain the current situation so that dual occupancies remain prohibited in the R2 and R3 zones and that the low-rise housing diversity code would not apply to this land use.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move what's on the book because I'd like it to be investigated.
Okay, we'll just hold on a moment, that might, that's becoming a foreshadowed motion. Councillor Rhodes has moved a motion. Have you a second, councillor Rhodes? No seconder, that laps and then your motion becomes the motion councillor Yard, which is the book.
Happy to second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Haddid. Any opposition?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I will vote against that.
Okay then, that's fine. So with the exception of yourself, everybody else is for the typist is voting for it. Okay, thank you. Next item is on page 92.
Move that way, thank you, Madam.
I'm leaving the room.
All right, wait a moment, we've got some people leaving the virtual reality. So councillor Sheldon moving.
Seconded councillor.
Thank you councillor. I did. Any objections?
No, Madam Mayor, a question and suggestion. Uh we're saying to endorse these, which I don't have an issue with, some of them take effect possibly in September. Can we word the motion that's subject to them actually going ahead or confirmation that they are going to go ahead? So we're not wanting out checks, only to find out that these things aren't going to happen?
Uh may I suggest that the recommendation then say that council endorses the recommendation? Um and then at the end, uh COVID permissible or something like that?
Whatever it was.
That would be the only thing that would stop it, I would suggest.
Yeah, well, I'm happy with it.
Okay, mover and seconder happy?
Yep, thank you.
All right, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Uh I don't know how we get councillor Aggie back in the room if he's left the room, um. Could uh
Lock him back in the door.
Ah, good, okay, good, excellent.
Um just checking that uh I was also recorded as not being present in the virtual room.
You were very quiet.
You went out the door with me, I remember.
Virtually, yes.
You were very quiet councillor. All right, thank you, um and you didn't participate in it as far as we can see. Uh next item's on page 99.
I'll move, Madam Mayor.
Seconded, Madam Mayor.
Seconded councillor Didd. Any objections?
No, but I've got another question.
Yes councillor, what's your question?
Um if there's no uh particular opening date and closing date for these applications, how does it work? What happens if they get a whole heap of uh of uh people applying? Does it happen on a first-in basis or because normally we we uh have an opening and a closing date and you've got to get your applications in and they're competing against one another? So is it just the um opening and closing date that isn't there, but they're all still competing against one another for the ones that are going to be supported and the ones that aren't?
I'll ask the CEO to answer your question.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um councillor, at a general level, there's always a new criteria and to be a criteria to be met by any grant applicant. Um experience tends to suggest that by having the um various uh grant opportunities open on a year-round basis, um it tends to regulate uh the the applications and actually makes it easier to administer. Uh but certainly I'll ask Mrs Bono if she wants to make further comment to that.
Uh thank you, um through the CEO, no, that's that's correct, um councillor and it would just open up the opportunity for groups um to to be able to apply at a more regular basis. Um and the criteria as such will be, would would not limit um people's acceptance of the grant and will bring those reports and recommendations to council as we do with the corporate sponsorship um policy, uh so grant, sorry. Um so um if that's that's basically, does that answer your question?
As long as I'm, as long as it's going to work, I don't mind, I just couldn't, didn't understand how it would, but okay, you got, seem to have it under under control.
Thank you very much councillors. Any other questions or queries at this point? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item is on page 1, 2, 3.
Go, that's right.
Don't rush me, so it's councillor Sheldon and councillor Hall. Any objections? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page 1, 3, 1.
Uh move that way.
Thank you. Thank you. Any speakers against? I'll put it
A comment, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um you know, uh uh thank you very much for the report, by the way, to see um, you know, what the city deal has done. Um it's interesting, the item uh on 1, 3, 8, the rail for Western Sydney and uh and that the city deal, you know, made a deal for the North-South Rail project. Um that, in my opinion, was not in the best interest of Liverpool. And uh I remember at the time uh being, the the item was at West Rock and we had the Leppington line as being the 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 line that was best in the interest of Liverpool and we were pushing for that until the uh the mayor, I think it might have been the mayor of Hawkesbury, I'm not too sure which mayor it was now, come to think of it, but uh came up and said that um that there'd been a deal made through the city deal that Liverpool agreed in the North-South line. And I'm just, you know, I think that's one of the faults with the city deal and councillors not knowing what they're doing. Um and really, I think if you'd have asked many councillors, they probably would have agreed that the Leppington line would have been their preferred option and we would have preferred to have kept the um the preference on that. So do you think there's any way that, you know, we can uh in future uh make sure that the city deals are making deals in their arena that are, that councillors agree are in the best interest of Liverpool?
Well, I'd like to answer that councillor because I've been involved from the inception. There's been a lot of things going on and uh the North-South was only part of it and to get the hard rail agreement, you're looking at a 40-year project. So it's not so much about today, it's about the future. And it's about making sure there's hard rail that will eventually bring in Camden and Campbelltown and other areas. But the issue about Leppington hasn't gone away, that's still very much a hot topic, still being dealt with like basically every meeting. Uh every meeting we've had with any sort of important stakeholder, that has been raised. Um we, I believe we are getting to a point where there will be some decision because I have made it very clear that that for us is a priority, but it's also a priority for our neighbouring councils because it gives you, I think, a less expensive option, which can open up the rail lines again for Camden and other areas and Campbelltown. And that was even spoke of, I think, less than a fortnight ago. So it hasn't gone away, it's very much on the agenda, hasn't been forgotten. And unfortunately, these sort of projects, it's not one thing instead of something else. There's usually a whole lot of parallel discussion going on. But I see councillor Sheldon has his hand up, so councillor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, I didn't second that motion. If you can take my name off, let's second you, thanks.
Okay, that's fine, we've got a mover, we've got a seconder. I had a did, councillor did down, I don't know why. Um
Check out did, miss.
Ah councillor Khanib, sorry, I apologise, councillor Khanib. All right, any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. The next items are committee reports.
Move them as a whole, Madam Mayor.
As a whole? Yes, I am happy to do that. Moved by councillor Yard and seconded by councillor Haddid, we do them as a whole. Does anybody wish any of those committees were moved and dealt with separately? Just realised my camera was off again. No? Okay, well, I'll put them, those in favour, those against, oops, declare it carried. Turn it to the page. Next item is presentation of councillors, oh no, sorry, questions with notice on page 2, 2, 8.
Uh yeah, but that one's mine.
Yes, it is in your name councillor.
Um just some additional questions and don't know if you can answer these here or you have to take them on notice, but um are we allowed to um are we allowed to say how much the holding cost is per day for a pet? Is it, you know, per day, per dog or per cat?
Yeah, I I know there's contractual arrangements which are private, but I'll ask the CEO.
Um Can you address that, please?
Yes, I can. Yeah, thank you, I'll need to take that on notice and check with our general counsel just to make sure um that is publicly available information, but we can certainly come back to you councillor on that.
Okay. Um and just in regards, one of the answers, I think um there's a 20, basically there's a 24-hour KPI here about getting um animals up on the Facebook page with the exception of weekends. Um I guess, you know, for some people, they only use Facebook on the weekend. So if we do find us an animal on a on a Friday afternoon, I think there's real benefit uh to getting it up on the website before we leave for the weekend. I know no one wants to, you know, if you work a Monday to Friday, last thing I want to be doing is stuck at the office on a Friday afternoon. But there are, you know, given, I just mentioned that there is a cost per day for holding an animal um and most people use social media over the weekend. Um I think we would find it would be an effective way to re, you know, rehome the animals or find their owners. Um so can we, I guess I'll I'll move a motion, how's that? Um and you can rule that out of order for being operational.
Let's hear it first. Let's hear it first.
Uh, well, the council, I guess, finds a way to put animals up on the website on a Friday.
Why don't you put it in terms of council investigate ways and means of doing that?
There you go.
That way you escape the issues.
Happy to second that, Madam Mayor, with some further questions.
Yes.
Um, and just another question, do we have an expression of interest waitlist? So if someone comes in to, uh, the vet and they say, I want a brown shih tzu, we don't have any brown shih tuzes, do we actually keep their name and number on record just in case we do have a brown shih tzu? Or another dog?
I'll ask the CEO to find the appropriate person for that one.
Mister Smith.
And once, yeah, I, I'm not sure councillor through the CEO, if you don't mind, I'll take that on notice and we'll be able to come back to you on that matter.
All right, well, can we add that, will we add that to the motion as well? Just on the assumption we don't have an expression of interest, um, that we investigate a, an expression of interest waitlist. Um, and one more, uh, actually a couple more, sorry, um. Actually, we'll do it. Can we, just on, just on these questions I've asked and, um, can, if they are, can they be reported to the companion animals committee? So I think we just report those stats through to the companion animals committee to say that we are meeting the KPIs, et cetera, et cetera, and, um, perhaps we work with that committee on, uh, perhaps expanding or refining those KPIs. So what I'm asking for there is, I guess, regular, um, detailed reporting to the committee and the committee can, you know, show that committee's aware of what we're doing in that space. That's it from me. I'll give, uh, councillor Rhodes.
Councillor Rhodes, you have questions?
Yes, um, the interesting one that, um, councillor Haggerty is, has already drawn to people's attention is the fact that on Fridays if an animal goes in, it isn't until Monday that it goes up onto the website. The first issue that I've got is not everybody has got Facebook, okay, so, um, although we have that system, it doesn't reach everybody, so I don't know what we can do about that. Um, but it needs to be addressed. The other one is that, um, and I think I've asked this before, whether the constituents get charged for their animal being in there, picked up on Friday, so that would be Saturday, Sunday. It gets advertised on Monday and, uh, perhaps if people haven't got, um, the internet to be able to pick it up, they might have a friend tell them that they've seen their dog on it, but that's two days that it's been in there. Do they get charged those two days, um, you know, without them knowing that their dog is actually there?
Um, I'll ask the CEO for the appropriate staff member.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh, councillors, there has been discussion about this before. Um, and I know that Mr Smith at the time explained that in terms of the process, every effort is made during the weekend and over the weekend to contact and identify the owners, um, but in terms of matters relating to charges, I'll, uh, defer to Mr Smith.
Uh, thank you. Through the CEO, yes, so when animals are within the shelter, uh, they are charged, but I think the most important thing to realise councillors is when we pick up a stray animal, um, council officers scan the microchip. If the dog is microchipped or has a collar, we return the animal straight home. So animals only ever enter the shelter if owners have not done the right thing. So if they haven't microchipped their, uh, their pet or we don't have a collar, we can't return them swiftly, uh, to their home. So when they are in the shelter, uh, they are liable to, um, to charge those, uh, to pay those release fees. But the important part to remember is, in the majority of cases, pet owners do the right thing, have their pet microchipped or have a collar so that we can get that lost pet home to the, to the owners as quickly as possible.
Yes, well, of course, animals tend to escape after they've been bathed and their collar's probably off and things like that and, uh, I just wonder if there's, uh, anyway, enough said about that. Okay, the next question that I've got is that, um, forty percent of cats to be rehomed within two months is the KPI. And a little bit further down, you say, um, uh, were rehomed and a hundred percent of cats were rehomed within two months. Um, how many cats were in the shelter, of which a hundred percent were rehomed in the two-month period between January and June? Uh, that's question eight.
Okay, um, I'll ask the CEO for the appropriate staff member.
Uh, Mister Smith again.
Yes, thank you through the CEO. I believe it was one, so we provide on a quarterly basis, uh, to councillors and I think we sent out the most recent information to councillors last week in the CEO update, or it may have been the week before, about the number of animals, dogs and cats that enter the facility and the number of animals that are, that are rehomed. So I would draw councillors' attention to that most recent quarterly update that was provided last week or the week before, but, uh, I think it was one.
So I'm glad that a whole hundred percent of it was re, was, uh, was rehomed or to pay half of it to have been left there, but, um, I, I think that what, what is annoying people out there is that we, we, we're promoting ourselves that we do take cats and yet we get another, um, version that we don't take cats. So people are confused and we either do take cats or we don't. And, uh, I think that we should be more clear about that to people than what we are. So, um, I'll come back, I'll see if I can add in another thing into the motion with councillor Haggerty's, uh, approval. On the weekends, okay, we don't have staff down there at the, uh, Rossmore Vets and the vet staff look after the animals in the Liverpool Shelter. Can council assure the constituents that the dogs are receiving adequate care, care on those weekends and how do we know that that is happening?
Mister Smith.
Ask the CEO.
Mister Smith.
Yes, thank you. Uh, through the CEO, we have a contractual arrangement, uh, with Rossmore Vet in relation to the care of animals. Uh, so I can assure the councillors, uh, through that, uh, contractual arrangement of the animal welfare, the welfare of animals over the weekend. During, during the week, obviously Rossmore Vets are still responsible, uh, for the care of animals, but because we have a number of staff, uh, that were, that were previously employed through the Liverpool Animal Shelter when it was a standalone council facility, uh, we go over and above what, um, what, uh, other councils do in this space, uh, to, to provide, um, additional care, uh, and nourishment and exercise, et cetera, for, for animals.
All right, um, do we have a return policy? Say a dog is rehomed and for some reason or other it tends to be problematic. Maybe they had a smaller animal at home and, you know, the dog that they've rehomed keeps eating the little dog or I don't know. Is there a rehoming, uh, return policy within, say, like a month? That if something hasn't worked out, that that animal may be returned to the pound?
I'll ask the CEO for the appropriate staff member.
Mister Smith.
Uh, thank you through the CEO. I'll need to take that question on notice and we can come back to councillors on that particular question.
And, uh, thank you for bearing with me, just a couple more. Uh, is it possible that knowing that some types of dog breeds that we predominantly have a lot of here in Liverpool for some reason or other, um, that are not really suitable for rehoming and they're the ones that hang around down at the shelter because they're difficult to rehome, um. And I know now that you're working well with, uh, dog rescue groups, but could those ones that are difficult to rehome be advertised, uh, particularly rehome, released to dog rescue groups? And could that go up on the internet and be shown as so, as such this dog would be suitable to be, um, be released, rehomed to the, to a dog rescue group?
I'll ask the CEO to nominate the appropriate staff member.
Okay, Mister Smith.
Uh, thank you councillor and through the CEO, largely we do do that, so we try and rehome if we can't find uh, the animal's, uh, owner, uh, or it's abandoned. We try and rehome animals and that includes, uh, through arrangements that we have with, uh, rescue organisations, so that is what we do. One of the difficulties is for animals, uh, that are, are, are difficult to rehome, uh, or are classed as dangerous or menacing dogs. We have legislative requirements that we have to follow, but in simple answer to your question, if it is a rehometable dog, uh, absolutely we try and do that and that includes using animal rescue organisations.
Could that information be shown on the website when you do do that?
We can cer-
Go ahead, David.
Sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, we can certainly look at the information that we have on our website to make it clearer. Uh, I'm also intending to put on our website some frequently asked questions that we have been receiving to, uh, dispel any myths and to also ensure that the most relevant and up-to-date information is available on our animal page on our website. So yes, councillor, we can certainly look at doing so.
Well, can we just add that in as a motion if that's okay with councillor Haggerty?
What is it you wish to add, councillor?
We need to, uh, advertise on the website so that it is perfectly clear that this animal is, uh, has got behavioural problems and we're, uh, looking for it to be uh, rehomed, released to a dog rescue group.
Madam Mayor, if I may, could I, could I suggest, um, through the CEO, could I just suggest, um, a, a point four based on, uh, the discussion we've just had that, um, council investigates updates to its website in relation to animal rehoming. Um, I believe that way because what councillor Rhodes just stated, there's an issue with us rehoming dogs that by law we may not be able to rehome. Uh, that includes animals that could go to a rescue organisation, but we still have legislative requirements, so I think if we word it that way, uh, it addresses what the councillors' comments are, but it allows us some flexibility to be able to, to, to do so in a lawful way.
Yeah, I think that's, um, gonna keep us out of trouble. Thank you, coun- thank you very much.
Happy to accept that.
Number, number five, another one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, council investigate working with, uh, uh, a cat or several cat, uh, rescue facilities. And we investigate the opportunity to service people taking their cats to the pound, which I don't think that we accept them at the moment.
Uh, I, hold on a moment councillor, we've had information from staff to say we're meeting all the requirements, so I think that your comment is a little bit, um, unfortunate, let's say. Um, so what are you trying to achieve with number five?
Number five, we, we talk about that we, uh, we, uh, take cats. If you've got a cat, if people want to take a cat to the, uh, Liverpool Pound, then they're, they're, they're not allowed to take them there. And what I'm saying is that, well, really we could if we could work with, uh, one of the cat rescue facilities.
So what you're trying to say is that the public be able to go to the pound and leave the cat and walk away?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I would say that investigating if that's possible and if, and a way that that can be done, rather than nominating a particular group, I would leave that a bit open generally.
Just say, okay.
I'd say council investigate the ability of the public to surrender cats.
Yep.
To surrender cats, just leave it at that. And then that way it'll, you're able to pick up on anything.
Well, then can we add another one then? Because I think it's important that council look at the opportunities of working with, um, uh, the public who, there's, there's several people out there, I believe, that are working with the cats and they will find the cats.
That, that will come up in the investigation, councillor. See, council investigate the ability of the, of the public to surrender cats, that will pick up on anything and everything.
Well, can I just add to that and that, um, uh, investigate the ability of public to surrender cats and, um, and different ways of, of rehoming cats. That'll do, that'll capture it.
Yeah, okay, and different ways to rehome cats.
Yeah, so just add it on to number five.
And different ways to rehome cats, yep, okay. Is councillor Haggerty happy with that? Sure. Okay. There's a lot of things I could say about.
Well, the cats should be very happy because you spend a lot of time.
Oh, there's things I could say, Deputy Mayor, but I'm biting my tongue, it might be a bit rude. Okay.
Can I be?
I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. Okay, the next item's on page two, three, two, and it's in the name of councillor Caliander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, I just had a further question in relation to, um, uh, the areas, so one of the responses, um, ref- referred to a, um, parts of our community that don't have ready access to digital infrastructure. Um, can I just get a little bit more detail on that?
I'll ask the CEO to find the appropriate person.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Councillor Caliander, can you clarify the point that you're making or the response?
Uh, yes, so, um, in the response to question four, um, it says that there's, uh, subgroups in the community which lack technical, uh, technological skills or equipment, um, or digital engagement, um. And I guess I just wanted a little bit more detail in terms of, um, not just in, in relation to programs, but, um, uh, other ways that those sections of our community are being engaged or, you know, reached at the moment.
Um. Mister Smith or Mister Homperas?
Thanks, uh, through the CEO. Um, so what we're looking at is, we understand that, um, by and large, there is, um, the way the community's engaging with council, um, is, is more and more digital, um, and and the, and they would like us to engage with them, you know, twenty-four seven and, and utilizing social media and those type of forums. But we understand there is still a small section which, um, either isn't technologically savvy or doesn't have the technology. Um, and one of the things that we're actually working on is, and, and, um, Tina can talk more about this, is um, through, as part of a library service, um, we, we would, um, be able to upskill some of our community members um, in relation to, um, the basics of using technology, um, and to, 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 to essentially upskill them, um, and, and also to provide them with, um, technological means, um, and technology to be able to engage, um, in a more digital fashion.
Is that answered? Councillor Caliander?
Uh, yes, I believe so, um, and apart from sort of, um, say like community facilities, are there other, um, aspects of, um, of council services? Um, so for example, customer service and that sort of thing where, um, you, or, or even, you know, responses to um, planning proposals and things like that, where, um, these sorts of strategies can be used, um, uh, I'm specifically thinking about situations like, for example, when the, um, the Miller Master Plan was put on, um, exhibition and there were very few responses that were received from the community. Um, I guess this response kind of, um, potentially highlights the reason why that was the case. So I'm just thinking about how, um, other aspects of councils', um, services could potentially be affected by low levels of digital, um, infrastructure access.
Yeah. Councillor, in terms of, of, um, our response at a strategic level, um, we've worked with KPMG to do, uh, to undertake a, a strategic review of potential service delivery. Um, and how technology can be used to improve delivery across the board. In all of that, however, we have to acknowledge that we have a different demographic profile and socioeconomic profiles that dictate that, um, not everyone, as Mister Homperas has indicated, um, will have access to the technology. Therefore, we, in all of it, when we consider service provision, um, we try to allow for and cater for an entire suite of offerings, um, from walking uh, through, you know, customer services as you, uh, identify, through to booking, paying for eh, for any service that you want from your device of choice. Obviously with five G, um, the demand for that will increase and we have to be able to respond to that and we are putting in place the appropriate measures and programs. And we have to be able to respond to that and we are putting in place the appropriate measures and programs. Um to try and make that as seamless as possible and yet cater for those who will not. Um be inclined to use the the digital options.
Sure. Thank you. I guess it's a good thing we'll all soon be five G capable with our vaccinations.
We're living in an interesting world. Okay, thank you, councillor Caliander. The next set of questions is in the name of councillor Rhodes and they're all being um answered on the, in August. Are you happy?
Happy to wait, happy to wait, happy to wait.
Okay, thank you. Next item is presentation. Presentation by councillor.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I have a presentation.
Yes.
I would like to present that relative to the item which is in config O one.
Well, we'll um we'll do that in confidentially, I would suggest. Thank you.
Thank you.
No worries. The next item is on page two, three, nine. In the name of councillor Caliander.
Me again, it would help if I took myself off me. Um thanks very much, Madam Mayor. I guess um the uh this. Came about from a recent report um in various media outlets about the impact that um potential changes. To the way that developer levies are structured um could really impact firstly council's capacity to deliver. Local infrastructure, especially to our um our growing communities and um I also. Um, you know, flowing on from that, the ability of uh local residents and, um, you know, people within our communities to have. More of a say on what that money should be used towards um and, you know, have an impact in terms of consultation. So um I've put that into the the background. So uh in in terms of the the actual notice of motion. Um it's to write to uh the New South Wales Government to express our concern, which I believe um council has already done. Um thank you to the C E O for your response there. Um but also to seek a guarantee. Um whether that's formally or through um through advocacy channels that um, you know, that retain. The community's ability to have a say in what um local infrastructure that money is is spent on. And um and make sure that we retain uh any sort of community input into um, you know, any anything like this. Because as we've seen in the last few years, the more uh changes we um we we see in these types of things. The further these decisions get from community input. Um and at the end of the day, it's council that's left responding to residents. Who are rightly unhappy about the impact of some of these decisions.
Do we have a second up? Madam Mayor, I'm happy to second that. Thank you, councillor. And councillor, you have your hand up?
Madam Mayor, I have a uh something.
Hold on, hold on. Councillor Chitty has been acknowledging his hand up.
All right.
Thanks, Mayor. Um previously, an audit was done on our council and three other councils um by the Audit Office in relation to our contribution. So that we're currently holding. Um were any responses needed to that audit and any outcomes, any improvements? Since that audit was done?
I'll ask the C E O for the responsible council staff member.
Uh Mister Smith, please.
Yes, thank you through the C E O. Um councillor Chitty, yes, there were a number of actions uh and there was an action plan um resulting from that. Uh I understand that had been reported through to the Audit Risk and Improvement Committee, but happy to look into that. And get a status update for councillors on our actions in response to that audit report from, I believe it was the New South Wales Audit Office.
Thank you. In in the changes that they're proposing, does any of these changes come from the part of the fact that councils do? Hold a lot of money in contributions and don't actually spend it?
I'll ask the C E O for, I suppose, Mister Smith.
Mister Smith, yep.
Thank you, through through the C E O. Not sure whether that's the primary reason. I think what the the government is looking at. Is trying to streamline the planning system and obviously the infrastructure contribution system. There's a lot of change that's occurring in here resulting from the productivity Productivity Commissioner's report. Obviously, the government um having uh agreed with those recommendations and then the Department of Planning. Going through and rolling out a series of reform agendas. Uh so what we are doing is going through that methodically. Understanding what is being proposed, putting submissions in place where we believe it is necessary, and that includes the submission that we've lodged. Uh to the Upper House Inquiry on Infrastructure Contributions. So, yes, a number of councillors do hold balances um that are quite high. Uh and in relation to Liverpool Council, obviously through the twenty one, twenty two financial plan, uh operational plan budget. Uh a a fairly important drive uh in in acquisition of land to bring that budget down and to get uh uh. Certainly, community uh services, parks, open space to our growing communities.
And just one further, if I may, Mayor. I believe we spoke about it and I believe it was coming, but I'm not sure if. Do do we have that delivery timeline for those projects that need to be delivered under the section seven eleven contributions? So that the residents know when a park is going to show?
Mister Smith?
Uh thank you through the C E O. Yes, we're just putting the final touches on that. That'll be then reported internally to the Strategic Projects Committee. And then that information can be provided to councillors and I believe it's scheduled for September, but I'll confirm that um uh with staff after the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mister Smith.
We'll be here in September, Mister Smith, so there you go.
Madam Mayor, can I make my suggestion now?
Yes, councillor Rhodes.
Um I just wonder whether this matter could be addressed at the appropriate forums, the rural forum and the new. Development area forum. Uh it would be a good way of seeing um if there is any. Um uh we we want to find out what the public thinks. So I I would like it to go on to those forums where the most development is happening. And um and see what the people, what reaction it is. And and explain it to them as well, educate them as well as to what's going on.
I'll ask the C E O to make a comment.
Uh we can certainly accommodate that request, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Point four.
We don't have to do a point four, councillor, it's going to be done.
Uh no, I'd like it there, please, Madam Mayor.
Put it in then, councillor.
By advertising to the uh the community that it will be done. They'll look forward to those um forums. If it's in the minutes.
Thank you, councillor. Any objections, councillor Caliander?
Uh, not an objection, but um I believe it is a matter of importance for our entire community. So rather than just specifically the rural and de- developmentary forum, maybe all of our um, all of our community forums.
Okay. Thank you. Um is any objection to this motion? I'll put it those in favour, those against, carried carried. Next item's on two forty one.
Yep, so um there's a, there's an update to this one. So based on the uh C E O comment. We've uh sent through some updates and amendments. There we go. Um and. I don't know how we do this, but perhaps we go through them one by one and people call them out. Um but uh testing and vaccination, um I've changed that one slightly because uh, yeah. Basically, it sounds like we are getting something, but um there's no reason why we shouldn't call for more vaccination. Uh hubs in highly accessible locations, um of particular concern to myself. Uh people in the two one six eight area don't have sort of ready access to vehicles and probably should be within walking distance of a jam. Um so that's sort of that one there. Um can we just scroll through that?
Uh the information, councillor's Michael Wyndham will be one of the sites that is coming up next week.
Can we move into committee of the whole, Mayor, so we can discuss this? Is that okay or?
Yes, certainly, councillor.
Thanks. And then are we gonna go through them one by one, are we? Did you say?
Councillor Hagerty's saying go through them one by one. We go back to the start. The first item is uh testing and vaccinations.
Just, and and I'm very supportive of calling for more things, but as you sort of stated, Mayor, in your mayor minute. Vaccination hubs, you've just added Michael Wyndham, and now that all chemists can actually do the vaccine. Um supportive of any motion that goes forward, calling for more for our community, but call for something that we can actually deliver. Um I think all chemists are now doing are are going to be vaccination hubs. So that's implemented. So do we just rehash it? In relation to more locations to conduct testing, I can tell everybody something. The one at the um. Whitlam Centre is a fantastic uh drive-through clinic. I was in and out in five minutes. So if anyone needs a quick one, uh you can go there and get a quickie. As in a quick, sorry, quick test. Sorry.
I knew you were gonna say that. I knew.
No, I I wasn't. I swear, Mayor, I'm being, uh we're we're in a formal council meeting, so if you want a quick test. The um, the um, now I've lost everything because of that stupid comment I made. That centre is really good.
Yeah, that's the one that's also open twenty four hours as well.
All right. Well, look, if we consider that redundant, fine, but uh you know, this was put forward two weeks ago and and at that point in time. We obviously didn't have um the locations for testing and vaccination that we had, but.
Can I also stress that the hubs, while we can help health get an appropriate venue. And a local venue, which I'm sure that everybody would agree with, um they have to have the vaccinations and the staff. So it's actually a health issue. Um and that's part of the, I suppose, struggle to get more resources as quickly as possible. Um as we all know, Liverpool Hospital has had a COVID emergency and many staff have had to be stood down. As a result of that, and that's been an ongoing problem. And today, I think there were twelve cases. As well as, I think, somebody passed away. So um, you know, it is a very moving feast, as I say. And uh we just have to be aware of that, but I.
Just, just on that point, councillor Hagerty, um I I think if we just make it clear to government that we're ready, willing, able. Have the locations, have everything uh to work with you. Um yes, get more testing clinics, get more vaccination hubs. Whatever is you like, we are here, so there's no pushback from us.
Yeah, there's no, there's no way of stopping it because we haven't cooperated or whatever else. I agree with you.
Madam Mayor, I have a uh something that I'm not too sure, but I would like to see it go in, but it'll be a call. Open this as a discussion. Um look, I'm very, very concerned that. Our uh accommodation sector here in the Liverpool L G A has been really, really hard hit. Um and I was wondering if we could add one in that we write to the Prime Minister requesting that Jobkeeper be restored. For the accommodation sector of the Liverpool visiting economy.
I've got that in there. I've got a a call for Jobkeeper. It's, well, it's in there later. But I, that was yesterday before they announced the payments today, so. Um maybe when we come to that one, we can discuss that one. How's that?
All right.
Okay, so we've done number one and we're just gonna basically say that we're willing to help with, help with health. As in any way, shape or form, something along those lines, bit more professionally worded than that, but.
Yeah.
Uh for essential workers is next, councillor.
Yep, so I think that one's already in place, so we can either put that as notes or leave it as is.
vulnerable community groups?
Yeah, I'll wait for the typist. Um so again, that one, we're certainly doing a lot in that space and thank you in particular to Tina's uh directorate. Uh I know they're keeping us, um sorry, this is Bono, um uh keeping us sort of, you know, updated with 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 lists. And working quite well with um community services in the area, so well done on that one. Um, yep. Any, if everyone's happy with that one, we can keep going. Um so just a bit, sorry, I I will call out the second point there. We've got a short term, we obviously got a short term issue here with people. Um trying to put groceries on the table and pay bills, but we are gonna have some long term issues here once COVID has, you know, once the outbreak's gone. Um so, you know, issues like mental health, um long terms, you know, long term support for local businesses. Um youth unemployment might be a particular issue. So I what I just want to highlight here that once the virus is up and gone. I I don't think that state government and the federal government need to pack up and go as well, that there is gonna need to be substantial and sustained funding. Uh to help some people recover. Some people aren't just gonna walk out the door once the lockdown finishes and go back to what they were doing. They're gonna need um significant long term support. So that that was the point on that second one. Uh that second point of vulnerable community groups, sorry. Uh anyone, yep, if we're done with that one, you had a great relief.
Um sorry, just um in the first one. Um where it says mental support for communities from a non-English speaking backgrounds, um could we change that to to um mental support? For vulnerable communities? Because that kind of just captures um a bit of a broader scope.
Hmm. And then take out from non-English speaking backgrounds.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Right, relieved?
Yep, uh so this is basically turning what was in the C E O's comment into a bunch of dot points. Um that we essentially do what we did uh last time. Uh we extend hardship provisions to ratable, all ratable properties. Um we've set a date from when they apply. We have that, we basically put in place that process we had last time. Uh we would suspend debt recovery action and we make it easy for people to apply for that via an online form.
Okay, councillor Chitty, you have your hand up?
Thanks, Mayor. Just in relation and just some questions on that, I know we did something very similar last time. This doesn't mean, though, that interest won't be charged on uh any overdue rates, will it?
I'll ask the C E O.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um there is a comment uh included in the report about that. Uh in terms of the the timing uh by which any deferral would take place. Um but I'll ask Mister uh Nadan to speak to that one.
Uh through the C E O, yes, councillor, it only refers to um a waiver of interest that would be charged on unpaid account rates.
Sorry, sorry, this one.
Di- di- did you hear? Sorry, I'm just repeating. It it don't, it only applies to interest um unpaid. Of interest that would accrue on um unpaid rates.
All right, so I get where we're going with this. So if you're in hardship, um we will work with you and defer your rates. But in that period, we are still charging him interest on that deferral?
Yes, the interest will be charged, but under under this um council resolution, they will get a waiver for that period that's determined by the council.
Okay, thank you. Can I make a suggestion to councillor Hagerty? Um and if George would put it up. It's the bit that relates to rates, George, Mister Jakakis, just the bit that relates to rates.
There is a, there is a red writing which relates to rates.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I've I've made a um, I'm gonna.
Oh, you've got one, okay.
Yeah, and obviously councillor Hagerty's motion, so if it can come up. Um to work out if councillor Hagerty would allow it. Happy to read it out, but it's, it's on the screen now. And it's pretty much to exhibit our intention for the minimum statutory period uh for a one-off reduction of ten percent on properties that sit within the definition. Of residential use subject to all uh criteria that would include, but not limited to, that it's used for own occupier purposes. At least one owner has claimed a government disaster payment and the property is in the name of an individual. Which obviously has to all go out to exhibition first.
Councillor Hagerty and councillor Caliander, are you happy with that to be incorporated?
Uh so we're gonna put that out for twenty eight days?
Yes.
Yeah, we we need to under the law, so.
Yep. All right, well, um yeah, as long as in that time we work out what the the cost of that is, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any back of the envelope, Fish?
I think asking an accountant um about back of the envelope. Taken it on notice, thank you, councillors.
And and it has been left open to ensure that it does go to the people that are in most need. So not, it's not just anyone and everyone that can apply. And if I look back at twelve months ago, when we implemented or or twelve months or so, when we implemented the TIP funding, for example, for the business owners, we did something for them and I don't think the take up was that big. Um so if something can go out to the community um for those that are actually in need, last time we did a lot for business and we did some grants and everything else. Um this time, I think we should start looking at our ratepayers who ultimately are paying the bills.
Thank you, councillor. Well, it's been incorporated into that, so.
Thank you, councillor Hagerty.
Can can I just ask a question on that? Like the, at least one owner has claimed a government disaster payment. Um.
Can can we clarify clarify that as a government COVID disaster payment?
Yeah, ha- happy with that, sorry, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, COVID, thank you. Yes, councillor Rose, anything else?
I'm just wondering if there's properties that have more than, you know, one owner, like not two, husband and wife, but more than that, is that? Well, it's in the name of an individual. Okay, it's all right, no worries.
Covered off.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next one, community facilities and sporting fields.
Yeah, in light of the eleven week thing, I think we'll we'll bring this one back in August uh by that, well, I guess we know now, but I was gonna wait till the August meeting to see if we got to eleven weeks, but it looks like we will.
I think so.
Um but let's, I'm happy to defer this one to August. Um.
Pull that one out.
Yep.
Um animal shelter?
Sorry, just just on that one, Mayor, if I I may, instead of pulling it out and then coming back, can we word a motion as such that if we do go back into uh COVID again and they've paid this, that it just automatically happens instead of having to do this every time and then seeing a report back? And um for the duria- duration of a lockdown, you're not allowed to use the field. Um it should just be given that we don't charge them for it, so if if it is possible and it can be worded that way, just saves a lot of paperwork and a lot of things coming back.
Um. Well, what's written there basically, I think, could do it, says that council provide a full refund for hireers, licence holders of any parks, sporting fields and other community facilities where a fee is being paid and the use of that facility is not possible due to, do you wanna put COVID restrictions? Um put into place for the duration of those COVID restrictions, just add COVID? Yes, no?
Yep.
Yep.
Do you want to, your councillor Hagerty?
Okay, just add that in. All right.
Um while while we're on this one, sorry.
The, wait a minute, the other thing that councillor Chitty wanted was that if if COVID restrictions return, that this become an automatic policy.
Yeah. Um while we're on community facilities, can I ask a question through you to presumably Miss Bono? But uh we've got the fields open from five to seven and I've taken advantage of that, wonderful. Um has there been much demand for extending that to eight or or longer? Or or, you know, five to seven is is adequate and and people seem to be happy with that?
Councillors, we're we're happy to take feedback on that. That was, you know, the initial response at the request of a number of councillors. Um and if the feedback is that, you know, as we go into a further period of extension, if there's demand for a extended uh hours of lighting, you know, I think we should be prepared to to support that.
Well, put in this way, have you received any requests in this regard?
I don't think it needs to be a motion, it's just, you know, if 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 there's feedback that, like they did it last time, they can extend it this time.
Uh. Um it just on that, rather than kind of waiting for feedback, um would it be an idea to maybe seek feedback on that? Um because I think a lot of people in the community may not know it's an option if, you know, they want it, that it can be extended.
I would like to ask the CEO to ask the appropriate staff member, has there been any feedback to date?
Yes. Mister Bono, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Uh. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through the CEO, uh councillors, we are monitoring that through um customer, ex- customer experience team. So uh initially, when um the onset of um the parks opening, we saw a huge spike in demand of use and so which required us monitoring that compliance during that time as well. So we do monitor this um regularly um through through that lens. Um but certainly we could um possibly put a survey um out or a um a call on a Facebook, social media response on that just to gauge anything further than what we're actually getting um from from that. Um could I could I also confirm in terms of your motion, councillor Hagerty, around the sporting fields? Uh the provision under the sporting policy is that um a concession of fifty percent is only charged during um if if that, if only fifty percent of use, which would automatically be instilled um following now that COVID's um and the length of time that we haven't been able to to activate sports um provision and that sport hiring provision for our our groups. So that 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 could, uh under our po- current policy, that provision will prevail.
Yeah, but basically if if there's an existing policy that's gonna kick in, which it looks like it will as we're locked down through August, let's let that work its way through rather than me sort of, I'll spanner in the works here by putting up a motion, that's all.
Yes, thank you.
All right, well, I think we've clarified that. The next item is animal shelter.
I think we've spoken enough about animals tonight.
Yep.
Um, yeah.
Local business, local business?
Um yep, so I've added one here which councillor Rose uh sort of touched on as well, which is we write to the federal government calling for the reinstatement of Jobkeeper. Now, I did send this through yesterday, this afternoon, uh Prime Minister announced an increase in the COVID disaster payments, which pretty much matched Jobkeeper. Um so I'm I'm happy to.
And can 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 we just, I don't think he's ever gonna bring back Jobkeeper across the board, but I think we've got a very valid argument for the accommodation sector. So if we just limit it to to the accommodation sector, we might have more chance of getting it. But what it does do is with Jobkeeper, it does keep the employees in a relationship with the employer. So um you've you've got a way of supporting that business to continue on during these hard times. And, you know, the, you you could build a very good argument for the uh for the accommodation sector because prior, prior to COVID or prior to really the Chinese, the uh the fallout between the uh the governments between China and Australia and then COVID on top of it, you know, that we were working at, I think it was ninety percent, I think somebody mentioned, um vacancy rates, you know, going gung ho, really good for the visitation economy. And then, after all this, I mean, they're 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 not even making thirty percent.
Yeah, but yeah, not just accommodation, uh hairdressers have been closed since the beginning of the lockdown, uh gyms have been, you know, shut down since the beginning, although I don't wanna pick winners here. Um I and and given the announcement today, I'd I'd actually be happy to take that one out. And I'm just getting nod.
It's your decision, councillor.
Um all right, let's take that one out with the agreement of the second, but I do have a couple more I wanna add on this one. Um that uh I know that we have a a a directory for local businesses that we created last time. Can we create a directory for free services online? And so what I mean by that is there was um something went up on our Facebook, I think it was yesterday, saying that we're offering free gym classes through Belgravia, which is fantastic. We all know physical health is 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 important and Belgravia do some great work in the community. However, we've got a lot of gyms um that are doing similar stuff. Um and I don't want us to pick winners, I don't want to sort of pick our favourite personal trainer or gym, but I think if there is a gym or anyone else that's offering free craft or whatever, then they run a local business in the area, they can submit it in the same way they submit their business to this online directory and we just have a directory of free online sessions that people can go and choose their their favourite one. Um what that does is, you know, once we get out of this, uh these gyms and these, whatever they are, open up and and people already have a a new relationship with this business and and they can come back stronger than before. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, but councillor Chitty had his hand up?
Actually, I did put it down, but just on that, we 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 still have our What's On page. The Liverpool Council, is there a way to integrate that with our What's On page? So in the morning, you wake up, um jump on Liverpool Council website, What's On Today, um haircut, which I don't need, um or a gym class or whatever it may be, and that'll actually then direct people to our website as well, where we can give them information on the health and everything else. So maybe, and that's a great idea, if we could try to integrate that with our What's On page, um we're killing two birds with one stone.
Yeah, I'm always happy to not reinvent the wheel, if we've got an existing service that that already does the job, so.
Okay, so we can add that in. Okay, Caliander, you had your hand up?
Uh yeah, Madam Mayor, it was just in relation to um the discussion about targeting particular uh particular industries, but it's dealt with, so I'm putting my hand down.
Um, oh, uh and then one more on this one, uh that we, that council write to the state government calling for a resumption of construction in the Liverpool LGA uh and allow construction workers living in the LGA to resume work. In line with, I don't, this is a given, but it obviously in line with with COVID.
With health regulations.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Is everybody okay with that?
Well, I don't think that's a wise one.
Well, if you if you live fi- you know, two kilometres down the road in Glenfield and you're a construction worker, you can go to work.
Yep.
If you live in the other part of Leppington, you can go to work, if you live in the other part of Wales, you can go to work. But if you live in this part of, you know, if you live in Liverpool, you can't, and I don't think that's bad.
There's also issues relating to where the numbers are hitting as well, so um but there were announcements about that today. Okay, uh and they're advocating testing, continual testing of construction staff. Okay, retail tenants?
Um based off the CEO's comment, I I thought we'd defer this one to next month. Um just on the expectation that there'll be some announcement about um commercial or, you know, commercial sort of lease arrangements like there was last time. Um, yeah.
Okay, pull that one out. Outdoor dining?
Um I've decided to be extremely generous with this one as per the CEO recommendation and we waived outdoor dining fees for this year and next year on the assumption that we get out of this soon and and we give uh those businesses in the mall um every opportunity to thrive.
Okay. Supplier payments?
Uh that one's pretty straightforward, we could, you know, we try and pay as quickly as we can.
Okay, planning and development?
Uh that one, as per the original um suggestion, looks like we are sort of doing something in that space, but, you know, let's let's use this opportunity wisely to try and get those DA numbers down and those planning proposals at the door. Councillor, I'm chairing here, sorry, Mayor.
Thank you. Can I also add, given we're in committee of the whole, that council still has had an abundance of DAs go through and even through the COVID era and this time through as well, we've had over a billion dollars each year, which is a lot of money in DAs, but yes, staff are working very hard. Okay, staff?
I think councillor Chitty had a question.
Oh, sorry, councillor, yes, councillor Chitty.
Thank you, Mayor. Just in relation to the response given to DA numbers and turnaround times, does that include, is that just DAs or is that the complying developments that we see through, come out, sorry, that come through our system as well?
I'll ask the CEO for the appropriate staff member, who will you all guess who that is, but?
Mister.
Thank you. Through the CEO, councillor, it's in relation to development applications.
Thank you.
All right, staff?
Oh, just, I threw on Splinterwood at the end, but.
Yep.
To give him. Uh and then the last one is just the stimulus, as we did last time, I don't think any of it's been announced, but, you know, let's get all those shovel ready projects um updated, ready to go. Uh I think we've had a a bunch of, oh, uh fantastic projects be funded in the last twelve months through that. Let's um keep, let's keep it going.
Yes.
That's it from me.
You have our list.
Excellent.
All right, that's been formally moved by councillor Hagerty and seconded by councillor Caliander. Is there any objections to these?
Can I just ask a question?
Certainly.
Um this would be to uh Vishwa, um we we do know how much this cost council last time we did it. Can I just have a reminder as to what that was?
Thanks, I think at a ballpark figure, it's half a million per month, but Mister Nadan, can you confirm those figures, please?
Thanks, uh through the CEO councillor, yes, it's um currently we're estimating about um half a million dollars uh impact per month. Now, last um last COVID quarter, we were looking at about two million dollars and the reason being that uh we we had a slowdown in the um in the DA applications coming through in that period. But I'm advised in 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 this month, uh and the the coming month, of the um the trend's not decreasing, so we are getting applications through through the um through the portal. So um dis- discounting for the DA and the related compliance levy, we're looking at half a million dollar impact uh on a monthly basis.
Thank you.
Oh, just to clarify, that's the impact of COVID, not the cost of what's being proposed here.
Um some of them have been included through the CEO, but things like um, you know, ten percent discount on the rates hasn't been included. So back of envelope calculation, if fifty percent of the um of our resident uh ratepayers take up this offer, we're looking at about three hundred to four hundred thousand dollar impact per month.
Thank you. Councillor Chitty, you have your hand up?
Thanks, Mayor. I've got one point I'd like to add if the mover is happy. Um and George, that is point two of that that I sent through. And it's just calling for a report um just on projects over five hundred thousand uh in Liverpool. It's it's just a report for the next council meeting on those projects, what it is, um what importance it is and if there is a clause in there as identified in the um in the motion there for the next council meeting.
Sorry, I'm just watching the typist.
Yeah, no dramas.
Okay, are you happy with that, councillor Hagerty and councillor Caliander?
It's a report, yeah, no worries.
Right.
Thank you, councillors, thank you, Mayor.
Is there any objections? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the carried. The next items will be in our confidential section. We will be closing the meeting to the public under section ten A two D I, section ten A two G and ten A two C and D one. And uh when the the public has been excluded, I will commend from what was decided in closed session. I will need the typist's assistance with the first motion. Yes, I think that's it. No, yes, no. Uh, okay. Council decided in closed session to accept the tender from Devcon Civil Priory Limited, tender W T three O three one, three O one three, construction of Stormwater Basin Six at Austral and Leppington North for an eight month contract term. And in addition, twelve month defect liability period at GST inclusive price as stated in the confidential booklet, makes public its decision regarding tender W T three O one three, construction of Stormwater Basin Six at Austral and Leppington North. Three delegates to the chief executive officer to finalise all details and sign the letter of acceptance following publication of draft minutes of council's website for the tender, giving it contractual effect in accordance with delegated authority. For this report has been brought to council because the chief executive office is instrument of delegation, proved by council in accordance with the current. Approved by council in accordance with the current provisions in section three seven seven of the Local Government Act nineteen ninety three. And only permits the CEO to accept tenders of a value of up to two million. And five, keeps confidential the details supplied in this report, containing the information on submissions received pursuant to. Provision of section ten A two D one of the Local Government Act nineteen ninety three. As contained commercial information of the confidential nature that it would if disclosed prejudiced commercial. Position of the person who supplied it. And six, the council identifies suitable areas where underflow drainage could possibly work. And report back to the September council meeting, it was put in, it was carried. The next item that was the um fire and rescue referrals, and it noted the inspection report of fire and rescue New South Wales. As shown as attached one, and exercises its powers to issue fire safety orders recommended by council's fire safety officer. To address the identified fire safety deficiencies. Next item is legal affairs, that receives and notes the report concerning legal affairs in Liverpool City Council. Report to be received in the August meeting once the response is received. Next item, um, that council receive legal advice of whether the documents received can be publicly released. Being there no other items, I hope, she says, oh, no, that that's wrong, no, this is the last one, sorry. Uh, council approves the hardship application of the uh the acquisition of forty six Boyd Street Austral. Identified as lot one two two in DP seven three eight two A two on the basis that there is no income being deprived from this property by the owner. Non-terms outlined in this report, delegates authority to and directs the CEO and his delegates to enter into negotiations with the property owner. And or their representative to acquire the property by agreement on the basis recommended in this report. Um, with, uh, uh, do do do, outline the report, delegates direct the CEO his delegates into negotiations. Delegates authority to and directs the CEO his delegates in the event that the agreement cannot be reached. To proceed with all necessary steps to give effect to the compulsory acquisition of this property. Delegates authority to and directs the CEO and his delegates to proceed with making the necessary application to the Minister for Local Government. And the governor in accordance with Local Government Act nineteen ninety three to obtain approval to acquire the property in accordance with the land acquisition. Just Terms Compensation Act nineteen ninety one, resolves that upon acquisition forty six Boyd Street Austral identified. As lot one two two in DP seven three eight two A two is classified as operational land in accordance with the Local Government Act nineteen ninety three. Authorizes its delegated officer to execute any documented power of attorney necessary to give effect of this decision. And keeps this report confidential pursuit into position provisions of section ten A two C of the Local Government Act nineteen ninety three. As this information would if disclosed, confer commercial advantage of a person with whom the council is conducting or proposes to conduct business. That is the items that were um agreed upon within the confidential meeting. I'd like to now close the meeting and say good night and wish everybody a very safe lockdown.